Sorry, we're red light.
There you go. You're good to go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the GBOS LUC joint special meeting. I know there's a lot to get covered today, so I want to just introduce the GBOS. I'll start with the GBOS members first and then we'll move on to LUC. My name is Jennifer Wingard. I am co-chair of GBOS and the land use supervisor. And I will.
Hi, my name is Mike Ettinger, supervisor for Housing and Economic Development.
And online to is Brianna online yet?
Yes.
Okay. Brianna?
Yes. This is Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and fire department supervisor.
Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety and Road Supervisor.
And is Guy on?
Yeah, Guy Wade, Parks and Rec and Cemetery Supervisor.
You and in the room, I'll start on my far right with Kevin.
Kevin McDermott, Land Use Chair.
Lee Smiles, Land Use Committee.
Ryan Johnson, GBO Land Use Co-Chair.
All right. And I will hold up on introducing, I'll let the members of the Alieska team introduce themselves when we get to that point of the presentation. All right, the Gerwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Gerwood Board of Supervisors operates under public meetings standard of conduct. At this point, we've had our introductions. Do we, I don't think, sorry, do we have any disclosures?
But now I'm a good employee.
Oh, I'm an Alieska employee.
The disclosures really affect GBOS, not the LUC.
Okay.
Yes.
Right, but we do have a hand up from Amanda.
Yes.
Thank you. I am a part-time employee and my husband is a full-time employee of Alieska Resort.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, my spouse is a full-time employee.
Okay. As chair for the GBOS members, I'm going to put these as not conflicts of interest under the current circumstances because we are not voting on anything unknown tonight. And so therefore I view that as, thank you for your disclosures, but I will view them as not relevant to asking questions and participating in the discussion. All right, at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
To approve the agenda.
Second, this is Brianna.
And do we have any discussion about it or any change? I'm going to go by consent then unless we have any objections, we'll approve the agenda as is. All right, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public. And keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. And as for one more thing about this at the request of our audio team here, it would really help us when you ask questions. If you can step forward, at least forward of the post, but also please feel free to come forward to these front seats when you ask a question, right? Again, so after you've raised your hand and been acknowledged or when you want to move into basically the queue here. It'll really help the people online if we don't have a key conference, they'll be able to hear us. All right, a couple of brief announcements. Forica Group Board Training is Tuesday, February 27th at 6:00 PM in the Gerwood Community Room. The program is free to attend and it's free to any, or it's open to anybody in the community. You don't have to currently be on a board. If you've ever been, might be, or if it's interesting. And I just had a long meeting with the head of Forica recently and, or with the person Lori Wolf, who's leading this discussion. And it's way more exciting than you might think. And I think that that is being evidenced in the signups or more than two-thirds full right now. So it's a very holistic approach. It's not just being, not a training in Robert's moving order, but how to be effective and build community strength while we're building community committee decisions. So we're super excited about it. Please register to make sure we have the proper number of handouts and materials. All right, that being said, I'm going to jump right into introduction. And if you'd be so kind, I'd like the Alieska team to introduce yourselves and the floor is yours.
There you go. Should be on different. Check, check. Oh, there we go. Appreciate you folks close. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I'm just getting the presentation uploaded here. Good to go. Okay. Yeah, thank you, everyone, for coming out. My name is Will and Lori and I am the development manager for Alieska Resort Palmer Way Lodging. Just before we get started, I have several things to give out to individuals and groups in the room and online. First off, I'd like to thank GBOS and LUC for allowing us to have this special meeting. Next, I'd like to thank Kyle and Margaret for helping me plan this several weeks ago on such short notice. Really appreciate their help in setting all this up. I'd like to thank our team at the resort, our ownership team who is here tonight. Skylab Architecture made it up from Portland, as well as all of our engineers and consultants and project partners for coming out. Next, I'd like to thank every individual or group member that I've met with over the past couple of years. I've always appreciated your candid feedback on what we're trying to do here. And lastly, I'd like to thank every member of the community who has provided testimony or comments or general feedback about development in Gerwood. We have been listening for years and it is your testimony that has shaped this development. It looked a lot different from when we started two years ago and that is because of the comments we got from our town hall a couple of months ago. Feedback we received during that, testimony you received during other developments and assembly meetings. So your comments have truly shaped what we're trying to do here. But thank you. So this is our first official community meeting and there are specific reasons to this through Title 21 that we have to mention. We are going to be submitting an area master plan amendment, a development master plan, and a commercial track flat site plan. So revisions to the current plan that exists. We will be going through this, so this is the agenda here. The process of this will be this community meeting. We will then submit to the city planning and zoning with feedback from the community on this meeting here. From there, it will create staff packet and there will be an additional land use committee hearing and GBOS hearing. And after that, there will be a planning and zoning hearing. So we hope to submit within the next month or so for a formal application. And we would expect the land use hearing or land use committee hearing and GBOS hearing to be in April or May. And that's just based on my schedule. And just to set expectations for night, for tonight, this is about development around the base of the resort. We will not be talking about mountain improvements tonight. That is a whole separate process, but we're not going to be talking about the gondola and the head wall tonight, so I'm sorry, everyone. So I'll just be walking through a bit of an intro. This is our project team. Many of them are here tonight. Many are online. So again, our former lodging, Alieska team and Skylab Architecture is our project architect team. We have multiple consultants, our general contractors who are here with us tonight, Ironwood and Waterson. But these people have been working extremely hard on these plans over the past few months, so we've appreciated all their help. We also have Little Bears on there as a project partner. We've been working with them for some time about including their new facility on this plan. Just as a way of talking about this, but we started this whole process about two years ago with the SE group to look at the new or the area master plan. And after we kind of came to this concept of planning, we realized that we needed to bring on a project architect. So we went through a pretty extensive process. We had an RFP process and engaged just about every architecture firm that specializes in mountain projects. There's even fewer of those who specialize in building mountain ski villages. So we, we had an extensive process of interviewing these architecture firms for months. The most impressed we were was with Skylab Architecture there at Portland. We really liked this firm because they presented something that was completely unique in comparison to the other firms. We also loved them because they had been up here before. They worked with the previous owners on a, on a project quite some time ago that never came to fruition. But they were familiar with Gerwood. They were familiar with Alieska. They're very passionate skiers, outdoors people, and we just got along. So I'll hand the mic over to Robin to talk a little bit about his company and yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Will. That was very nice. We are thrilled to be here and we're thrilled to be working with Palmer Way on this project. When we started the RFP process, we got really excited about it. And it was just, it was so great when we were selected and we got to start working on this project. We've been working for about a year now. I think we were selected.
Get a hold of pretty close.
Yeah. Real close. Okay, we were selected about a year ago. And in that time, I was very ready to come up here and spend time in Gerwood. And like Will said, we had a previous history here and really loved this place, so I'll give a little little idea about who we are. So we're a 30-person firm in Portland, Oregon. This is the picture of us at the renovation of our new office. So we just finished renovating Quonset Hut in Portland. And it looks a lot better than this right now. So we're a relatively small firm. We have a long history and I'm an architect and I work with outdoor brands, so we bring a lot of that experience to this project. We're architects, designers, creators, and entrepreneurs. Making today will be hopeful, inspiring people tomorrow. So some of the pillars of how we work are regenerative, regenerative design. So that's the idea of like designing in a partnership with the landscape and the natural environment. And that can come across in a couple of ways, like blurring the boundaries between landscape and architecture. Looking at natural materials like wood structure and other, other materials to be in kind of concert with the sites that we work in. We build a project narrative throughout with the project that we work on. So creating a story with our clients and the communities that we work within that is authentic to that place and authentic to that project. And that can kind of guide our decision-making and design throughout that project. And then really thinking creatively about how we're going to build a lot of building in like mountain environments, extreme environments. You have short building seasons. And so you have to start getting creative about the systems that you'll use. So we, we look into like mass timber, which is the picture on the upper right, which is essentially like wood beams, columns, and floor plate systems or modular construction, just really trying to kind of add the mark of the park and be part about how we, how we know the buildings that we design.
Thanks, Rob. So the first item that we really want to discuss is the area master plan amendments. And this is the current area master plan. A lot of this will be kind of an echo of what was discussed in the town hall a few months ago. So this is what was adopted in 2008 by previous ownership. This was also planned by SE group, the planning that we are working with. But essentially this calls for 1,377 units of hotel or residential units, as well as 100,000 square feet in commercial space. We worked with SE group to determine you know, what areas were the most favorable to develop. And this whole area master plan, very well done, but we wanted to identify areas that was low risk or geographic challenges, wetlands, avalanche risk, which is very prominent over in the day lodge area. So we worked with SE group to determine three areas of development. And are you on mouse? Okay. And so to the right of the resort there is what's known as Track Day, what we call the village area.
I'm sorry, Will.
Track B, which is Moose Meadows Current Overflow Parking Area. And then Glacier Creek, which is the HLB lands to the north. And just as to mention, yes, that is HLB lands currently. We won the rights to that through an RFP back in 2021. And it's, we don't own it yet. It is owned by the HLB, but I'm here in the process of acquiring that land. So we are completely separated from the other project that was proposed, Hills. But I just wanted to mention that. So some of the development objectives that we established over the years, and again, this is, a lot has come from our ownership team who wanted to establish these objectives. But this has changed pretty significantly as we have continued to receive testimony throughout the projects. As we've talked to groups like GBOS, GHGC, we have some pretty great points here that I think could really benefit the community. First being to provide diverse housing options. So not just, you know, staff housing, but provide saleable condos, saleable single-family homes, workforce housing, all different types to build dense development. This has been, you know, a recurring theme through land use committee meetings, the current Gerwood area plan that is being updated. We wanted to provide workforce housing for local workforce and not just the resort. This is a very common topic in every meeting. We wanted to create long-term housing options for renters, so create some stability and the ability to rent for the long term. And not just seasonal options or in-between short-term rentals or anything like that. Provide housing with ground floor retail. This came up quite a few times in the Gerwood area plan meetings. Attract new businesses to Gerwood by building new commercial space. One of the first phone calls I had was a community member to talk about development. I fully expected most of the conversation to be about workforce housing. And the first words that came out of her mouth were new commercial space. Because if you have a business or a new business idea, you can't open up a business here because there's no space right now. So that's been a priority of this development as well. Restricting STRs for dwelling units, again, a very common topic that has come up in just about every meeting in Gerwood. Provide lands to Little Bears for the construction of a new daycare. We've been working with them for a while on this, so they will be building their facility, but we have provided the land for them to do so. Build and promote construction of maybe community amenities. A community center, a pool. If you've learned to swim in Gerwood, unless you've been doing it in Glacier Creek, you trail aged it in the pool at the hotel. Provide available housing for purchase. Workforce housing for rental is, is great, but people who work here also want to be able to buy eventually. And that is something that has come up over and over again. Provide new opportunities for recreation. Increase access and promote, promote development of new trails in the valley and build with the environments in mind. So Carl already skipped over it a little bit, but I will show our updated site plan. And this is quite similar to what was shown in the town hall over here, but just to reference that hotels and club area there. And we outlined all of the current trails. Green Daughter Trail up there is a proposed trail that we lined with Gerwood Trails Plan. So it's not exactly what they've shown, but we've talked to a few members of trails as well as the trail designer. And we'll, we'll discuss that a little bit more after, but essentially you have Track Day or the Village Area over beside the hotel. The Workforce Housing Village, Moose Meadows over there. And what we're referring to as the Wager Creek Neighborhood up in that section. And we will go into further detail on this, but I just wanted to get a overview of what the whole site plan looks like.
So in thinking about the three neighborhoods, we have the Village, Moose Meadows, and Glacier Creek. And just as, like to give you an idea of some of the character we're thinking of, the Village is directly connected to the hotel. It is, it has a great connection to the mountain, has additional parking in it. As we were thinking about it and that ability for like activity and kind of adrenaline and how the nature activities and also kind of a place for rest and relaxation. We took inspiration from the landscape around us and the incredible views that you have in this valley and sort of designed the sort of progression, the movement through the village to really take advantage of that and frame views of the surrounding mountains and thinking about it as a way to really connect you to this place. In addition, as we're thinking about the massing of the buildings, we're actually looking at this landscape and the layering from the valley to the sky in this alpine environment, seeing how that can be reflected in the architecture as it develops.
Yeah, so this is the site plan of Alieska Village area. And in general, you know, these focus areas, we also presented at the town hall. But the goal here was to really create a walkable, engaging skier village, ground floor retail, condos hub. We have a new conference center. That section, we built and, or we will be building a new ski school facility and a small hotel extension. But we wanted to include areas for new public event space, as well as just some, you know, interesting commercial opportunities in this as well. Up to the right here is the new proposed DNR parking lot. So as well as additional parking over on the north side of this. But overall, this plan calls for roughly 200 to 300 condo units, roughly 34,000 square feet in commercial space, as well as 12,500 square feet for the new conference center. For questions? Is Winter Creek Trail showing on that? It is not showing it right there. So yeah, not shown to the far right of this, but we can go back and after and talk about Trail a little more. That's okay.
So then Moose Meadows, which is the workforce housing neighborhood that also has amenities. This was really thought of as a community-focused thing. The area provided a good amount of workforce housing. It's sort of based on this idea of a main street, commercial streets, their inspiration from Main Street and say like a frontier town and the idea of mixing retail and housing above, as well as others, many of the assets like the community center and the child care facility.
Yeah, so the site plan for Moose Meadows is, is pretty strict to workforce housing and community amenities. We do have the existing Snap Housing 1 and Snap Housing 2 building over here. But the goal of this whole community was to build workforce housing and not just for, you know, the seasonal worker who's here for summer and or a little bit working here for one season during the winter. So we do include dense housing in what we're calling the first phase. But as we moved back in the different phases and we talked about that out here, but we wanted to include, you know, your, your two bedrooms, your three bedrooms up to town homes again. So people can move here with their families if they wanted to, if they had spouses that they wanted to move up with, they could. And they could really establish a life here. And we've included the Little Bear over in this area. So that is a 10,000 square foot facility. And then this over here, which we'll get into more detail about, is an open air ice rink, as well as a center and pool. So we'll show some floor plans for all of these. But yeah, the, the whole focus of this was to create a sense of community, bring workforce housing to Gerwood, provide just new recreational opportunities and ensure there's, you know, resilience for workforce housing in the future.
There are playgrounds somewhere close to Little Bears?
There is outdoor space within Little Bears plans for, you know, I can't remember.
We have several playgrounds as part of our fenced-in area that's going around to. It's not open to the public, that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, thanks for joining me there. But there is additional parks within this area in the workforce housing as well.
And then Glacier Creek, which is more of a single-family housing development with a mix of housing sizes and styles. So we planned to have attainable housing as well as single-family housing. It's really a neighborhood that's kind of based on proximity to trail, recreation, and a direct connection with nature. And then the idea that the housing there to be sized and planned to be nestled into the landscape, so the idea of architecture and the existing landscape. They collaborate with each other.
Yeah, so this is the current area that is zoned for GRST 2 in that area, which calls for resort mixed-use development. And I know we're in the midst of updating the Gerwood area, we're going to update this area. But we went through quite a good analysis and determining what was possible over here and what would be best suited within this area. So some things to consider, we're at the wetland boundaries, which you can see in yellow kind of all around this area. Well, it's the multiple streams and Glacier Creek to the left there. But most of the developable area is within the, you know, center or valley of this whole area. Next thing to consider was the existing trails. And that current GRST 2 zoning crosses over with the trail that hugs the block of Glacier Creek, so also much stumpy is there. There gets quite a close to it. One thing that we also wanted to consider was the new trails plan that will be coming out. So, you know, we haven't had a chance to have a direct meeting with the local trails committee yet. We've reached out to individuals. We had a chance to speak with their trails designer as well to discuss maybe what options we could consider. And as you can see, that GRST 2 zoning really crosses over the whole middle of this area. So we looked at an option that created a bit of a buffer between that trail of Glacier Creek and created a very individualized, separate space for the updated Nordicee Trails with Trails Committee. And the current GRST 2 zoning calls for Rosby. And the current GRST 2 zoning calls for roughly 27 acres. And this is re-formatted shape that is also 27 acres. It just provides us the option to consider the trails, but not consider the current trails and the challenges that come with this site aspect. So this is what we've landed on with designing Skylab initially.
So that like any money movement out of there, I don't know if they'll do this, but like they're trying to draw a signature or confirmation to be like, both you and mom.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Please continue.
Thank you. I mean, the goal of this was to not just build large homes. We wanted to build diverse housing, wanted to attract families here, but we also wanted to build attainable housing. And you know, there's still a process to think about in this, but we plan to build several units within this development that will be attainable for purchase units. And this will be within this whole development area. I started to look at separate models from other resort towns and I don't have the exact answers to it right now, but it looks something like just almost like a reserved housing for current workforce. So imagine someone who's lived here for 10 years and hasn't had the chance to buy something in Girdwood because they get bid up, the properties are just too expensive. We plan to build 20 units that have efficient lot sizes, efficient sizes in general to the square footage. That will just be more attainable for purchase and this whole plan within Glacier Creek is a lot further than the process. You know, we plan to execute on the Alienska Village area and Moose Meadows area first and then begin to build this after. So we believe we have time to work with the community, work with groups like G Boss and LUC to set up something that gives priority to members of the community that have lived here for a long time, who are frontline workers, who are workforce here. To set up something where people who've been here for a long time and have another chance to buy, have the opportunity to do that. Aside from that, we really wanted this whole community to be a better trails oriented community. I think that having a Nordic ski trail in your backyard is just something really cool. And again, we haven't had that chance to have a follow up meeting with Trails, but we plan to work with them in the futures to integrate this as best we can.
You may have answered this question already a little before, but is that land already open? Is that in the process?
It is not. It is not on the Alienska. It is in the process.
But is the Sorry guys, sorry. Let's wait on questions. I know you have some that are really appropriate for writing, but let's wait on questions till we have them.
I will jump back to that quick because I forgot to mention that. The Pulse Gondola is something we designed with it's essentially a horizontal gondola that goes that connects this area to the village area. Another thing that I forgot to mention in this neighborhood, sorry, there's a lot of information. But there is a Nordic ski facility that we have designed in this section as well as an additional parking area. This is some other feedback we've gotten from the community that the current Nordic ski parking often fills up with people doing backcountry skiing or any sort of skiing. So we wanted to provide additional areas for parking as well as a Nordic ski facility, which again, we've been working with Nordic Ski Club in Girdwood to look at that project. But yes, the Pulse Gondola is a horizontal gondola that goes from this section to the village area. And that's in an effort to reduce the number of cars that are traveling around that area and provide other means of transportation from the village area to this area. So that is the Area Master Plan Amendment section of this development. And now we will get into some more detailed plans for Phase 1. So plan is to submit a development master plan for Phase 1 with our Area Master Plan Amendment, which includes those days. So in the overall site plan that you saw, this is the first phase of the development. And that includes within the village area, one of the condo buildings. So this will be 78 units. The conference center, the ski school facility, as well as the extension to the hotel and new retail space within that within that condo. And then the additional parking on the DNR lands. And within the Moose Meadows area, that includes 38 units, workforce housing, the Little Bears facility and the community building over here. And I just explained that, but this is a zoom up of that area or the village area. And here's some of the floor plans as we get into the village. So as you can see, this condo building has underground parking in it. We have retail space within this section. This would be the conference center. This is significantly larger than our current offering at the hotel. The goal is to be able to bring, you know, new groups to Girdwood that otherwise wouldn't have been able to. This is the ski school facility that is about 9,000 square feet and then the hotel extension which is roughly 3,000 square feet. But again, this is the first phase in trying to build that walkable skier village. This is an additional floor. So this would be at level with the DNR parking lot, but we have some condo units here, an additional retail space along this whole floor here. And then additional commercial space on top of the ski school there. So there are additional floors above this, which would be straight condo units in different formats and in different square meters. And we will do some renderings of that.
So we are just finishing design. So we're about 35% of the way through the design process. So as we kind of proceed, I guess, just take that into consideration. We haven't designed everything and made building in it. But this is a view, essentially an aerial view. You're north of the village, kind of looking towards the mountain. The hotel is on the right tram building and then you can see the roof of the Nordic Bar. Beyond the building to your left is the condo one building. So as Will was describing, there's retail and commercial space at the ground floor at this level that's on direct access from the DNR parking lot. And then three floors, the condominium above. The this plaza is split on two levels. So there's stairs down and a lower level that's essentially at the level of the tram drives today. That has retail space right here. And then this is the conference center, hotel extension and the ski school here. So then this is a view if you come from the the DNR parking lot, so kind of the eastern part of the site and you're approaching into the village, condo one building is on your left. And then we, you know, you get a little bit of a sense of like how we're trying to meet the land here, like do you have these areas of boardwalks that are kind of taking inspiration from things like Winter Creek Trail where you can get off the ground and the ground kind of moves separately below you. And then you can get a little bit of a sense of what we're talking about and I'm trying to bring some of these views toward the mountains and the desert. This is a view, like you can imagine being on the tram ride now and kind of heading towards a hotel. That we're stopping that and there's a kind of a parking and drop off area. You can't, you won't be able to drive all the way to the tram anymore. But this is that end point where the conference center is, that that becomes kind of a drop off place for the village. And a place where you can park and go to the retail or go into the village or access the conference center. So conference center here, looking at like heavy timber construction. And you can see the hotel in the background and then this is condo one kind of to the left here. But to give you a sense of this development, kind of in the context of the mountain. This view is essentially like the middle of the village. So you're kind of on the corner of the hotel, looking kind of northeast. That's condo one on the right, some of the retail space that we're looking at. The previous view at this level, that drop off is just the conference center room. So you kind of get a sense here of the buildings and the kind of landscape around them. And then just like as Will was talking about, this this level is the DNR parking lot level and you could walk all the way flat on that level to the tram, to the where the Nordic Bar train is. So that's going up and down in ski boots. That's how you're walking. And then this is the final view in the village. This is, we're essentially approaching towards the tram. It's a ski school on the left with here and potential food and beverage above. And then the tramway cafe or retail space as the hotel extension here. And just kind of framing that view as you move towards the tram.
Then looking at the first phase of Moose Meadows, so I gave a bit of background on this at a Girdwood Housing Economic Committee a few weeks ago. But first of all, phase of this is planned to be 38 units of dorm style, so dense housing. We also included ground floor retail on that building. The first phase includes Little Bear's facility, again, 10,000 square feet over there, as well as the recreation and community center, which includes the ice rink and pool and rec center. Again, here's a floral land and this would be the first floor you're going, retailed on that first phase of workforce housing. As well as Little Bear's site plan over there and the community center. So this shows the ice rink here, multi lane map pool as well, that the kids pool up here, that kind of fitness area within this area here. There's also an outdoor rock climbing wall designed for this space. And some stands that line the hockey area over there for the ice rink.
So a couple of views of the Moose Meadows area. So this is the entry to Main Street. So you're essentially opposite the turn into the hotel. That's where you turn left. If you're coming from Girdwood, turn left and you'd be on Main Street. To the right is the housing building. So it's two floors of housing above a retail space. And we sort of designed it with this kind of front porch covered walkway area in front of the retail space. And then breaking up the massing. This is where we're kind of taking inspiration from that frontier town, sort of architecting. And then to the left is the community center, rec center here. And then the covered hockey rink, which is connected to it. So you get a little bit of a sense of, and you have like an outdoor climbing area. The indoor facilities are beyond that. If you're standing right across the street from the housing, this is a view of what you would be looking at. So you pour the alley above one floor retail, commercial space. So the hockey rink, the covered hockey rink is the full NHL size hockey rink. It's covered, so it's open on both sides. To the left, you're seeing Main Street and the housing. And to the right, you're looking out to the top to Moose Meadows. But when you're when you're on Main Street, you have the ability to, you know, watch what's going on inside the hockey rink, but you all can see all the way through. And then that's the fitness center that we're looking at. So to the fitness room and kind of entry lobby waiting area lounge for the fitness facility. And then this is a view if you're all the way kind of at the lead into the chapel parking lot. So you're plus side of Moose Meadows, looking back towards the mountain. On the right is Little Bears, the Little Bear facility. It goes further off page, but this is the main entry for Little Bears. Or being a drop off zone here. And the hockey rinks and fitness center beyond and then Main Street and housing up.
As part of the submission with the Area Master Plan Amendment and the Development Master Plan, we'll be submitting a commercial provisions to the commercial track by site plan. So this is essentially just moving frag lot lines to accommodate the development. This is the current frag lot plan. And essentially we will be shifting these lines within our property to accommodate the development. So not as exciting as anything, but necessary to mention. Just in terms of the general timing for what we hope or what we expect, we hope to start the first phase of this in 2025. And we're assuming that each phase will take two or three years, after which, you know, first phase we will build another condo building with more workforce housing. And the third phase will be that last condo building, the last area of workforce housing. And we're looking at about five, seven year plan for that track day or village area and workforce housing area, after which we would hope to develop the Glacier Creek area. But that is the presentation. So we would like to open up to questions or testimonials.
Question? Nope, not yet. Thank you, but that's not the way this goes. But thank you. So what we're going to do is I would need to start first please with the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and LUC Board. If we have any questions first from any members of Girdwood Board of Supervisors or LUC Committee.
I'll start.
Yeah.
One good question, the, well, several questions, but I'll start with one. Can you remind me the Area Master Plan, which is currently in force? Which year is that? Is that 2007 or 2010?
I believe it is 2008.
Actually, okay. But I will also double check that. Okay. And this is a similar enough size to be considered an amendment to that rather than a new application?
It is so under the modern vision for Area Master Plan. We are allowed 10 to 25% shift in density or increase in density from that Area Master Plan. That also includes acreage, which is why Glacier Creek would be a part of the amendment plan.
And I think housing as well. There's 1,300 or so in the, I think most of this would be within 25%.
Correct. Okay. Well, well below than what we're actually considering for development is significantly less than what is in the current Area Master Plan. Yeah.
Do you want to lay down any? Okay, all right. So yes, please.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Will. Thanks for making this presentation. You know, it's very ambitious and looks great. One of the things I wonder about is access. You know, we're proposing, you know, over six, eight years, all these structures that have, I wonder if, have you guys been, had any dialogue with DOT about additional access to that area? Because already, you know, we're sort of bumping up against that now. And if we're decreasing traffic to that spot, you know, there's one road going that direction.
Yeah, right. Definitely. But a lot of thought. Yeah, we definitely put a lot of thought into this over the past few months. We have spoken to DOT, but the, I know it's not the most popular topic, especially in the Girdwood area. Meetings, but creating that second access across where the current plan calls for it on Glacier Creek, that can be done through the Glacier Creek development. So there is the option to build that separate ridge across. And, you know, I know that's potentially farther down the road, especially with other developments, but there is the option to do that in the future. We would also look at other options after having further discussions with DOT. If anything else is necessary. We are currently in the process, we've had kind of a traffic impact analysis done to determine if that traffic study that was initially done with the area master plan needs to be updated. That sounds likely that it will need to be, just to determine what is necessary from the DOT perspective, just improve infrastructure in general in that area.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the board or LUC?
Yeah. So I'm interested in the development master plan that you're going to submit soon. Are there significant changes to, are you proposing significant different standards than what's currently in time between the one for the dimensions and design standards, things like that? I know that's an option under the development master plan.
There are some that we're looking at, like particularly in the village with the scale of the buildings, just because of the scale of, you know, development in that area and just trying to design buildings that will be sympathetic to that. So there will be some that we are proposing.
We didn't send you a bit more comprehensive list, but all of all the.
Those two, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yes. If you wanted it, yes, we could do that.
Excellent. It looks to me like we could move on to questions from the public here. And I'm sure there are a lot of, just one quick reminder, hands and yes. And if you, if you would like to, you can move forward to this chair to ask your questions.
All scanned.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Aliaska Skylab?
Yeah.
Right. Quite decent presentation. This is my second master plan for the municipality in two days. So my name is Russell Self. I've been here since seventy nine skiing this mountain. I've owned an Alpine Ski Shop in Anchorage called Ski AK, many of which you may know about. And recently retired, but still actively engaged in this resort area. I have three pieces of property and I'll get to a question on that in just a second. Looking at this master plan, it's very concerning about how little housing we have. And I'm just wondering, as you go down this road, you talked about the Glacier Valley piece and the condos and the ability to make those affordable to individuals. Most of the individuals who need this workforce is not going to be able to manage a two hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar mortgage. These are busboys, these are lifties, these are mechanics, these are servers. These are people who have a lot of resource to offer to this community, but don't have the ability to come up with a mortgage. So it should be really clear that in your projections, when you're establishing your long term debt as a picture, you need to let the community know roughly what these pieces are going to cost. I know there's debt costs, there's asphalt conditions, there's all kinds of speculation down the road, but you need to have a rough order of magnitude for these people to truly understand what their options are. Because we may build this whole thing out and it'll turn into another copper. For lease, for rent, for lease, for rent. And these people nearly need to know in an order of magnitude, what you're really proposing here. And we don't want to see another copper, because this is a beautiful community here. And I can attest that everybody here believes that. You may have a grand plan and it's really good that we're moving forward on something, but you need to take the order of magnitude and scale. And when addressing the workforce development issue and the workforce housing issue, people really need to know, because all of a sudden you'll build all this stuff out. And as they say, we build it, they'll come. And they won't be able to come because they won't be able to afford it because they're making twenty one dollars an hour. You know, and they have no savings and they get a five fifty credit score. So you need to really think about that. Now, my second question is more personal. I'd like you to address the issue of the STRs. Can you talk to that STR issue a little bit more about restricting STRs? Because I'm an American citizen. American citizens are standing on private property. You have no business dictating to me what I am to do with my private property. If I want to rent my private property, I don't think some people think also on that. I want to be sure that I can control my private property and not wind up with a corporate and municipal entity engaged in suppressing our activities as a private property owner, as an American citizen. So I'd like to hear your opinion on that.
Yeah, I would say not really an opinion of mine. But we plan to restrict STRs within the HOA of the Glacier Creek neighborhood. So no STRs within Glacier Creek. That was the plan.
I see. Okay. So that's within your, your design bill?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Brilliant.
So excuse me, I need to apologize for one thing. We're not used to having this many members at a joint LUC meeting. No, no. So let me just clarify a couple of other things. I noticed we had some comments come in on chat. We can't see chat and so that doesn't, that doesn't work. So anyone online, if you have questions or something to say, you can raise your hand and we will do our best to, Kyle will help keep me on track for that. And then because we have so many people here, I should have mentioned earlier, I should, I should keep it. I will keep everyone to three minutes or less on your, the easiest thing to be to get the most information tonight would be if you ask your question. And there's going to be plenty of times for opinions within the community dialogue that we have afterwards. Because I don't know if you noticed that we do have LUC and G boss meetings that will be part of the overall process. Okay. And those are great opportunities for general discussion about things.
So.
Absolutely, absolutely. And since, okay, I'm, do we have, so I'm going to go. Great, Amanda Grace, and you guys can come up whenever. So I'm going to start with Kelly.
Mine's a follow on question, I, around the traffic study. Specifically whether it's going to include the Aliaska Highway. Because in some respects, you can almost not turn left, you know, on the highway now. And then you're going to make this major development and it's going to be one thoroughfare. And man, that seems like it's going to be just a disaster. So when you reference traffic studies, will it address that main artery specifically?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So we've had a traffic impact analysis done. We have to look at that and have a determinant traffic studies required. That we will have the conversation with DOT as to what is required, but I don't have the answer to that right now. We will have those answers prior to submission. But yeah, we don't have the answer to what improvements need to be made. We've just had the necessary studies done for DOT to look at to do that. So once that information is available, we can make it available.
Okay. So it sounds like the study's done, included the Aliaska Highway and that goes to DOT and the recommendations will come out of that.
Correct.
Okay. Then my, then my second question is, has your plan been integrated with the airport long term plans such that there's nothing in opposition between these two plans?
In terms of expanding the airport, or you're talking about the airport hotel that's over there?
I'm not talking about anything other than there's an airport, those kids have a plan. Have you talked to them to make sure your plans don't, you know, and then there's something down the road? And, and I'm not, just, just to make sure you, you've actually just gotten in touch with them because they have a long term, like a twenty year plan. There's some road stuff, there's some everything and, and just making sure that there's nothing, you know, flight plans. You know, have you considered the impacts of, of your development on flight plans? Because, you know, we're all turning base to final right over your new houses. Is that just all integrated? And just a, just a reminder to check that box.
Yeah.
The airport, right there. Yeah, no, sorry.
No, it's been brought up. We actually haven't spoken to the airport yet. Some are listed groups to meet with. We hope to have those meetings, but they, a lot of the meetings in Girdwood, we had official meetings for, but we haven't had that chance to talk with the airport yet. It has been brought up several times back when we had the town hall initially a few months ago and more recently to discuss the impacts from the airport. So it's, yes, it's still a conversation.
I was about to pull it last night at the airport. Don't be telling me about that.
You can tell me later. We, we'll get in trouble if we talk about it.
All right. Amanda, if you have to come up.
Hi, my name's Amanda Tuttle. I just have a couple of questions. What's your total wetland impact area that you guys are anticipating? What are your mitigation plans for that? And do you guys plan on completing an environmental assessment? Or I personally believe that you should probably complete a full environmental impact statement. Reason being is there is a historic district of Old Girdwood that's downstream. And this is a, it drains, Glacier Creek drains sixty two square miles of rainforest. And so wetland impacted mitigations, I just want to make sure that we're really understanding the full impact in this community of, one, just so many large scale projects going in at once. And what you guys are, yeah, that's out looking for you guys.
Yeah. So we did have all the wetlands mapped out for each area. And with the exception of one area in Moose Meadows, which is actually kind of right beside where the helipad is currently. So, you know, that, that short kind of brushy area, the community center would cross over that slightly. I don't know the exact area of that, but it's, it's quite minimal. We designed the village area to completely avoid wetlands, as well as the Glacier Creek area to completely avoid wetlands. We still have a long process for, for the Glacier Creek area, which we will conduct all the necessary environmental considerations.
Okay. What is your total, what is your total footprint altogether, like a size acres that you guys have going on with your projects with all phases included?
With all phases? I should know that off the top of my head, but I, I don't.
Is it roughly three sixty eight or three eighty seven more in there?
That was the previous area master plan and that included parts of the mountain, track C, track D over by the day lodge as well. And so with the, the Glacier Creek area that we would be pursuing is twenty five or twenty seven acres of developable GRSD two area. But we would be looking at acquiring seventy acres so that we could dedicate a lot of that to, for environmental purposes, for open space, for trails. But yeah, so we would be gone three eighty six plus the additional roughly seventy units within that Glacier Creek area.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. So I'm going to take one more from inside, within the room, which is Grace. Where Grace went. And then I see that we have hands online and then I'll add some more hands.
Hi, my name is Grace Pleasant. I have a couple of questions. And I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the first presentation, the beginning of your presentation. The current master plan, how many acres is that?
Three hundred and eighty six and change.
Three hundred and eighty six and change. And how much have you developed out of that today?
All that, the current owners of Aliaska have developed are that stacked housing, two building, which is seventy one acres, as well as the Nordic Spa facility, which is commercial space. I could get that exact number for you after. We do have a summary. I could fire up my computer after this to get for you.
And you're saying that you're proposing to add the HLV public lands an additional seventy acres to your existing three hundred and eighty six. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then what is, with respect to that proposal of asking for the disposal, do you have a development agreement in place to deal with that?
We do not yet. So we have an ALOI in place with them, which was in the HLV work plan. And we're working through a development agreement, which will become fully public once it's completed and we will go through the same process of acquiring that land as the other HLV land.
So will you be using the appraisal that was used in the previous disposal under the current?
So yeah, we, we're completely separate from it, separate from it. We would have a new appraisal done. Yeah.
Okay. And then I had a question. This is kind of more technical. But when you speak to the point of workforce housing, what is your definition?
This is dedicated to businesses within Girdwood or employers within Girdwood. So we hope to work.
I guess I'm not maybe, I'm trying to ask you, what is your definition when you say, when in the national definition of workforce housing, HUD says it's thirty percent of the person's income? So is that the, the criteria you will be looking for your workforce housing units?
No, we are not using any national definition or anything like that. Our workforce housing is being built to focus on any employers in Girdwood. And we, we hope to conduct a survey to assess all current and future needs of employers within the space to be able to dedicate units to those businesses. We will be building some of the, if not the most affordable units in this first base of rentals.
And do you have any projected costs associated with that to stipulate what, your first, I think you said you have seventy, I'm sorry, was it seventy eight units that you proposed in your lodging kind of? Oh, I'm sorry, thirty eight units of dorm style?
Thirty eight units. We don't have a final risk on that. A lot of that would be driven by the construction costs as well as the final financing that, you know, is associated with that project, which there's, there's a lot of options of working with local financing companies like HFC or something to that effect.
Okay.
Which will offer favorable kind of financing that would allow you to charge lower rents.
So and I guess my last, my last, my last question. What sort of concessions are you going to be looking at from this community with respect to this development?
Terms of?
This development. Are you looking for tax preferences? Are you looking for reduced pricing on land like the previous development asked did? What's, I mean, generally speaking, when you're talking about building workforce or housing or attainable housing, you ask for concessions. So have you not identified those yet?
We have not identified those concessions yet.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to a couple of questions online, starting with Philip, please.
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I came a little bit late and this may not be in the planner's bailiwick. But how does a mountain as small as Aliaska start handling all these people? Mountain's too small. I mean, is there a plan out there to, to do something? Because anyway, yeah, for all these people coming in, I think anybody who spent any time here would agree, Aliaska is too small to handle these number of crowds. If you could answer that. Thank you.
Yeah. And we, we will be making, or we're, we're looking at making mountain improvements right now. But the purpose of this meeting was to discuss the developments around the resort. So we won't be discussing those improvements for the mountain right now. But we definitely realize there is a need for that, especially with the grower that is coming to Girdwood with this project and other projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually, can I, so I'm going to take one more online and then we've got another question from our land use, one of our land use committee members. So let me start with Sabrina. Sabrina, are you ready with your question?
You're muted.
Muted.
Oh, there you are.
I can't speak. Can you open the chat?
You're open. We can hear you.
I can't talk.
Oh. Open chat. I see. I see.
Tell you what, can we work on that for one moment and I'll, we'll have another question while you work on that? Is that okay?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So Sabrina, we will see what we can do. Okay. And we're going to take a question from Lisa with Lani.
Hi. So my question is actually a very personal one. You know, if I work for Aliaska only in the winter and I want. It, you know, if I work for Aliaska only in the winter, and I want to rent something long-term year-round because I do work for other businesses here in town the rest of the year. Um, will there be year-round rentals for those of us that don't year-round work for Aliaska? Please?
Yeah. Like the answer is yes, people to make long-term uh leases within this, this new workforce housing. I know that the, the current is, is shorter to accommodate a lot of the seasonal uh employees, but the goal is to um accommodate long-term leases uh within this whole workforce housing area. Yeah.
Thank you.
I think I figured it out, and uh Sabrina can let us know. We'll, we'll try to get the rest of this open. But her question was, with all of these new buildings to attract people and create more housing, where is everyone going to park? It seemed there is less parking and more attractions.
Well, uh, if you want to talk to this, I, there's net positive parking in this, so we have more parking with the addition of the DNR log. Um, new parking that's going in within the uh Moose Meadows area, as well as the underground parking that will be through a beach condo building uh in the village area. Um, so we are adding a significant amount of parking. And we have conducted uh a lot of analysis on the required parking and projected parking that we might need with uh future mountain growth. Um, the addition of all of this development. Um, and it's not something we're taking lightly, because I know it, it's come up uh when we propose something over on the um, the day lodge parking area over here, a, a lot of and also have seen uh what happens on Military Mondays, what happens on busy ski days and people parking on the streets. So uh we are not taking the parking issue lightly. Um, and yes, we have, we have increased the amount of net parking quite significantly. Uh, I keep, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head.
It's parking on DNR land, correct?
Correct.
I want to say it that way, parking on DNR land, because otherwise it sounds like it's only DNR.
Uh, sorry, Department of Natural Resources. So that's uh, we, we have a lease with them for uh the mountain land. And that includes that area right side, uh the village area. Um, and it's allowed us to uh use that area for ski services, which parking falls under there.
Thank you. Was there any pile, did she have anything else, or was that?
No, I think that was it. Let Sabrina, I did open the chat, so if you would like to. We ask people not to use the chat because it doesn't show up on public records, so, but for certain cases, if you need to use it, please do it, and we'll let, we'll get your questions.
Okay, and I think we do have um a couple other, let me just see what other questions in the room. If you've got a question, raise your hand, so I can just kind of see where, roughly where we're at. Okay, all right. Um, I'm going to start here, and then Larry Daniels, and then Terry, and then in the back, okay?
Yeah, I uh love the drawings, but I did notice that in those drawings, there was a very small amount of snow.
Thirty tiny space.
So my question is, are you experienced with dealing with significant snow loads? And where is that snow going to be deposited um on the property? And is that going to be highlighted in the package?
We, we do have uh snow uh storage space highlighted in our landscape plans. Show here. We do know that that's, that's an issue, and that's something we need to deal with. There is a good portion, like, and the walking surfaces, like in the uh villages, that's actually heat novel. And then uh, yeah, we, we do have landscape plan, kind of showing the location where we're planning for storage now. And it has been enlightening, I guess, to be there this year, like this, more to know than uh last anyone has here. So, yeah, we definitely understand that we need to plan for that.
And one thing I'd say too, I don't know if you have experience with giant piles of snow, but they somehow magically attract piles of trash. So I'm just wondering, is there a plan for also mitigating some of that downstream garbage flowing into the waterways and things like that? Is that considered in those snow uh deposition areas?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Thank you. Can I go to Larry Daniels?
So, yeah, Larry Daniels, um, I have sort of moved one in. I do believe you should be able to quote your parking numbers. And as part of any past uh development and master plans. Uh, not only were there parking requirements for existing development, but then you're adding additional development, and you're actually using up some of that ground. So coming to this meeting and not being able to tell us what your parking numbers are, I think is not appropriate. Uh, because maybe thinking this thing through, and you know, if you're seeing Military Monday and, you know, you know what the parking lots uh are, aren't you? If that's a, if that's a legitimate question, you know. Secondly, on, on your roofs, I see what appear to be a lot of standing roof uh metal roofs, at least that's depicted on you, and they're sloping. So that means that snow's going somewhere. And then, as previously commented, uh particularly with development around the uh the transit, there's already a lot of snow storage over there that you're planning buildings on top of. So, so you're actually taking away from current snow storage space.
Uh, just with that, like all the, we have primarily flat roofs, like the condo building has a flat roof.
No, I'm talking about the, like, your, your.
Base camp and some of this. So all of those are low, so like three eleven or lower, and the plan is to hold on to the snow.
Okay. Um, how much are you currently charging for your employee housing? Which might give an indication to expose your envy, what future might cost or mean.
Yeah, the, the price range is uh based on square footage of those units. Uh, I believe uh the lowest right now is eight hundred, and that goes up to sixteen hundred for some pretty significant units. What we've done with the um new staff housing is reduce uh size of a lot of those units. And, and the dorm style, uh you share kitchen and common space. Uh, we, we had a pretty extensive um employee survey that we confirm what the greatest needs of uh our employees were and what they wanted from staff housing. Um, and that included just general personal space. So the staff housing one, uh a lot of people are in bunk beds, sharing a lot of space. So the, the new dorm style units um have your kind of a desk area, bedroom, bathroom, and you share kitchen space and common space. Um, so reducing that footprint of the overall room has allowed us to um bring down that the rents, obviously, that will change with time, um and general price increases, but um these will be more affordable in general. Again, it's, it's several years out from um starting construction and ending construction, so yeah, prices will fluctuate between that time.
And then one more question. You're currently, you're parking on grounds uh site where a lot of also storage is currently uh resource storage going on. Uh, it being shown as developed land, uh not, uh, so where's, where's all that going?
Are you, are you talking about the Moose Meadows area, where we would store some of the equipment?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, we're working with our mountain team to identify some new areas to store that equipment, uh which is maybe a better suited question for, for Duane. Um, because we're, we're working with the mountain team to determine those areas to, to store that. But um, yes, we, we, I don't have that answer for you right now.
Thank you for those questions. Terry, would you like to come up so you can?
No, because my question was about the flat roof and snow shedding, and it was covered, so thank you very much. I enjoyed all the different housing options and scenarios. And as a mom of a thirty-five-year-old kid who's looking to buy a place in Girdwood and can't find something, I'm excited that there's a possibility someday to even afford to buy a piece of corporate Hirdwood, so thanks, and that's all I have.
And I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you're up next.
Yeah, well, um, you mentioned a couple of times that you're, you're not. Well.
Thank you, that'll really help with people online.
Uh, you mentioned a couple of times that you're not prepared today to talk about ski area, uh, the ski area developments. But the ski area is the, the part of your portfolio that I derive the most value out of. And um as you're, one of the other common, commenters had earlier, um, this could, the developments you're talking about here today could impact the ski experience. So I think it's part of the big picture, part of me having an opinion about what you're presenting today.
Sure.
Um, you know, like, I think a lot of us moved here for the skiing. We didn't move here for the hotel and the other resort amenities. Um, so understanding how that ski experience could change is a big part of the community understanding the big picture here. Um, so I guess my question just, when can the community expect to hear about any ski area developments?
I, I do not have that answer. Um, we are in planning process right now for all of those. And, and yeah, I, I couldn't give you an answer on when we'd be ready, surely.
I would encourage you to, to do it in a timeline that um allows us to understand that big picture, because again, this development, I'm not gonna, I have no opinions about it right now, other than maybe skiing was different for me. And I, I need to understand, um, hires can address that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I see that we have a question online, Max.
You're muted, Max.
Sorry about that. Um, thanks for the presentation. Um, my name's Max Cubitz. I'm a um co-owner of a small pottery studio in Anchorage, Alaska. I think a lot of people are excited about the prospect of um increased commerce or um commercial space in Girdwood. Could you talk a bit more about how you envision uh the commercial space being utilized?
Um, a new, a new pottery space. No, yeah, we, we, uh, I mean, one of the major things for us, uh, and yeah, I know there's been so much in, in this presentation, things I forget to mention, but uh we do um hope to have a new grocery store in the first phase. We have been in discussions with several um different um groups on that, and, and think we're getting to somewhere on having a grocery store in Girdwood. Um, but we do hope to have um several places for local businesses uh like yourself to open up uh a new branch in Girdwood. Uh, you know, some people reached out to me in town hall a few months ago about opening up new businesses in Girdwood or, or Anchorage-based businesses that wanted to um have a, a new space in Girdwood. So we would be um quite open to, you know, any, any opportunity and talking. Uh, and if, you know, if you wanted to send me a note after this, I'd be glad to, to follow up and, and look at some of those options for you. But uh open to any kind of business um within the village area workforce housing, um Moose Meadows area. Um, definitely want to have um a lot, a lot of big businesses come here, so, yeah.
Okay, can I see a fresh selection of hands in the room for anyone with questions? Okay, so I'll start with John, and then I'm sorry, I don't know your name, and then uh, just blank. Okay.
John, just a clarification, the Little Bears facility, even though it's incorporated within the boundary and leased the land, that is not an Aliaska project, that is strictly a Little Bears project.
Correct, yes, we, all we've done is provide the land for them to do so, um, which is, I think, discussed in the, the Little Bears event some time ago, that we are only providing lease, and Little Bears is building that on their own. So, yes, completely.
Thanks. Uh, Tim Sharn, HLB Commissioner, thank you for the presentation. Uh, a couple of uh things that I want to share are, are concerns. And, and one is the glacier, related to the Glacier Valley development. Um, concerns related to whether or not that decision is ripe to be made right now. And whether or not is it, it is in conflict with other area plans and uh current uses. Um, when I hear you speak about the current master plan, uh which we've been operating under from two thousand and eight to, to now, that's about fifteen years. We've seen the development of the, the workforce housing and the spa, as you highlighted. Two, two very good developments in that last fifteen years. You've, you've said that your priority is the, the village and the Moose Meadows area. All the things that you identified um are going to be uh completed within a, a seven-year timeframe uh you estimated, and then you'd be moving on to the, the Glacier Valley development. I think that's overly ambitious, and for that reason, it's, it's not right. If those are your priorities, let's pursue those priorities, let's be successful, let's learn from those priorities. Let's see what works and what doesn't work for, for our community before we develop a very sensitive area, like the Upper Valley, Glacier Valley, where it may be in conflict with our, our upcoming uh land use plan and where it will be in conflict with current trail uses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, I'm sorry. I apologize, I just.
Jerry, Jerry, come forward.
Sorry, could you come forward though, because you're behind the post.
I'm very excited about the plan, and uh I agree with Tim that you should focus on the first two, first two phases. And the community is worried about that third phase. And start on the first two. And I'm extremely excited about, you know, Little Bears. And we, you know, desperately need Little Bears. Do you have any timeframe? Maybe this is for Joan, as to when that project could be completed?
Um, I mean, we are hoping to do some clearing and grubbing of the area uh this summer, uh subject to getting those permits in place. But we, yeah, I mean, uh, Little Bears is actually moving uh, uh quicker than kind of our design process right now. And uh, yeah, we as, as quickly as we can, I think. Um, that has been uh their goals from what, uh, you know, the meetings we've been in together. Um, I uh.
For supporting Little Bears, because it's desperately.
Sure, yeah.
Crystal Hope. Uh, so we, our original plan was to uh go in twenty twenty-five. We received uh some excess or some, I guess, a surprise from Rasmussen Foundation recently, which kind of tipped us over the edge of having enough money to go now. So we are hoping to break ground in twenty twenty-four this summer. Uh, we have an RFP that we just received three responses from yesterday from Verid Solid Contractors, for who will build the building and, or do pre-construction services with the potential to build it. So things are moving forward, and uh Skylab, we have been um making them work hard, and that's why we're ahead. Thanks.
Thanks, Kristen.
All right, do we have more questions in the room? Yes, we do, okay. Um, we start with, so is it only you two? All right, let me start with you, and then I'll go to Amanda.
All right, I guess I'll just have a comment, maybe an opposition to a lot of that, like third-phase development um opinion, as a community member that fits the mold of Terry's son in their mid-thirties, like I don't really want to wait a decade or fifteen years to be entertaining the idea of buying a, a home. And so I like, it's a scale of recognizing that it's a delicate resource, and development of valley is super fragile. But also keeping the can down the road and waiting for that to happen is not a way to like solve that problem. Um, so I would say the complex problem is going to take a complex solution. I appreciate if you guys are including things that encompass like more of the community needs on a full spectrum of scale. But then we can't just act as if like, Upper Valley, it is delicate, not denying that. But it's all a little problem, I guess, so I appreciate you guys looking ahead to that and hope we can act on it as appropriately with proofing, proof of consent through those first two phases. And being in a confident spot in that first phase to like create those opportunities.
Thank you.
Amanda. I have a question, are, um, with my ignorance, have you guys received any federal funding? I know McCaskey's appointed approximately three million dollars last couple of years to this community for the water treatment facility improvements, and then also uh some sewer and water zone development in this community. Curious if you guys have received any of that.
We have none.
You have, okay. And the other thing is that I do, I love a lot about this. As a professional, I am in environmental science, that's, um, you guys have done an excellent job. I really appreciate your designs around the mountains. Um, but my one concern, and I appreciate it, is I just want to make sure that there is still a separation in this community between the public infrastructure that they are going to provide us, and then we have very clear kind of binds between what is theirs and what is ours, because unfortunately, you know, the owners of the resort does change, but this community doesn't. So it. But this community doesn't. So if that wasn't going to be you guys in the future, I want to make sure that we've got pretty, you know, some very explicit details on how that would stay and still benefits the community.
Yes, so I can speak to that a little. I I know that Ryan Pomeroy never wants to sell this resort. He loves this place. Like, I know for sure. He loves this place. His family loves this place. Every employee in this company loves this place. Like, yeah, it's, I know he's not going to sell it. In the instance that if anything ever happened, as an example, we could use the chapel there that is set on a ninety nine year lease for, I think, a dollar a year it is. So we have set up the same thing with Little Bears for that. And that's what we plan to do with all of the other public amenities as well. So that would see any change in ownership, the continuation of those amenities.
So I have a question that has come in online from someone that's having trouble connecting. And there, I think this is a question for Skylab. And if you can point us to other examples of projects you've done and asked and how they've impacted the surrounding community.
Yeah, so we work in a lot of different environments. Like, we I mean, one of the things that I like about Skylab is that we work across all projects scales, like we do restaurants and retail and single family homes and multi family and everything up to like, we just completed a million square foot building at Nike, so the biggest building on the Nike campus in Portland. Which is just the thing, like, we we kind of think of that as a strength, like, we work across all these fields. We get impact, impact and input from all these areas. But just like mountain community work recently, it's like, so in twenty twelve, we did a ski sky lodge at Powder Mountain in Utah. Which was a really fun, unique project, like that was built on the top of a mountain top. It was for a community that was kind of developing, like, housing in that area and they had no public facility. So it was like the first public way to base your ski day out of the lodge there. So that was that had a big impact on that community. And it was like a really challenging design problem to design a lodge in nineteen thousand feet on the top of this mountain. But that's one. We just recently completed a A frame hotel in Winter Park, Colorado. So it's like thirty two small A frames, about four hundred fifty square feet that operate as a hotel. And I think like what these projects do, and I guess it's a little bit hard to capture, is that they kind of create a community around them. I think we've been good about trying to create a space as a lot of Ian, people feel comfortable occupying and like, it's just sort of intangible in the end when you know, the place that you design become instrumental in people's lives.
May I ask one follow up question on that? Is it fair to say that this is a larger scale project and potentially more impactful to this community than other projects that you've done?
Yes, yeah, like, the scale of all three phases, like just track A and track B is like, this is the unique project for us. It's really great in that way, like, these don't come along all that often. And so it's a really big opportunity. It's a lot of responsibility. So, yes, this is the unique one. I think, you know, for us, we love that that challenge and we're very dedicated to making a successful project.
Okay, do we have more questions in the room?
I think Amanda inspired me to ask this. Have we considered sewer and water capacity? Because this is a pretty big expansion. We do have another development going in, and I'm just wondering if that's been considered. And also, what is the source of water for this area? Are you, are we doing a well? Are you guys comparing those that currently exist?
We actually had a meeting with A W today. We were in Anchorage earlier to run a more specific analysis on all of those, all of the flow that we are expecting. And so they are in the process of, I think, evaluating all of those kind of future projects, as well as our project in the in the first phase that it is, and then looking at the long term as well. So I don't have the exact answer for you, but it's, yes, we are considering it. We, you know, there's a lot of groups to reach out to this within this project and talk to DOT, AWU, all of the local committees. So, but yes, we we have talked to them, addressed the issue, and we're working on it. And I the water source. It's, I I don't know the answers to that.
You know the answer.
Yeah, yeah.
It can be public water. So again, working with A W U to see if they have capacity or if any capital improvements were required, but they're they're looking at that too.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, seems like we're winding down. Do we have any more questions in the room? What, do you?
Yeah, I do. So this is inspired by an earlier question. So the Recreation Centre and Ice Ring.
Yep.
You described earlier, Little Bears, we know is being funded entirely by Little Bears, and you're giving them a long term lease, so they'll have the same security as the as the chapel.
Correct.
But the Recreation Centre and Ice Ring, that's a Pomeroy development that Pomeroy is paying for, is that correct? Or is that going to be another third party?
No, that will be another third party. So we plan on donating the land for that project. And we have done significant legwork on the design of it as well. And we have had kind of a lot of conversations as to our operating partner and fundraiser for that. But that would be something we were very dedicated, including that in the first phase. So, yes, we have to bring in a separate partner for that to help us raise funds.
And you said the partner, you have identified a partner, but you're not ready to share that.
We have not identified the partner yet. We've had conversations with a few different groups, but we, yeah, we have not done that.
And their responsibility is to fund that development as well.
Correct. And we will help them with that in any possible way, especially with the donation of the land to upstart that kind of fundraising process, as well as all of the work that has gone in around the studies, design. And including it within that development, kind of getting that economies of scale from the rest of the film and around it.
Would there still be emergency services access at the tram base?
Yes.
Any other questions? Now, let me start with the boards. Any other question from the boards?
I have additional questions to lead on to that.
Yes.
Given the size of this development as you're moving forward, and if all things come to fruition and everybody's happy in the world, aside from medical service and EMS and tram bay at the base of four there, are you going to have another substation somewhere else to provide EMS services?
We have not figured that out yet. I do not have the answer to that. Michelle looks like she has her hand up in the back, maybe.
Can you come forward? The people online have a very hard time hearing from all the way in back, so.
I mean, obviously, we're excited about the development. And so looking forward, as we move forward with these many large buildings, we my purpose, my personal opinion, obviously, because it hasn't gone through political review and all that stuff, my personal opinion, having done six fire stations in Anchorage, worked on those capital projects, is that we will probably ask for a smaller substation, a small one for a third ambulance. And then maybe just a support vehicle, because we are going to need, again, this is my personal professional opinion, not, you know, has gone through review. We're going to need a truck, we're going to need a ladder truck, right? Because we have a lot of now larger, taller commercial vehicles, lots of buildings, just like in Girdwood right now, we're seeing very tall houses, you know, construction going on. So we are going to need something cheap shot of talk though for years. We are eventually going to need to get a truck. I know Larry doesn't agree with me. Five years down the road, you know, or seven years down the road, we're going to need to look at ladder truck. Can we put a ladder truck in there? Yes, we can, but we've got to move something out, right? So we're probably going to need a third ambulance. Right, even today. Yeah, so, but it doesn't have to be a giant this station. This is a big station, this very big station. It can just be a small station. If you look at what's at Vale, it's a small station. Right in the Vale town site, very small station, small bays, living quarters above, very small, in a ski resort type thing, right? You look at Whistler, you know, I grew up, I Whistler, Whistler went from a volunteer page department to also needing a ladder truck, you know? I mean, it's the same thing. So, but again, this is years down the road. Years down the road. But we'd love to have a space for that second station at some point, small station.
Thank you.
And I see that another, we have another board member, Amanda. Do you have a question?
I do. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Um, I saw on the parcel viewer that Aleeska Resort has property on the Max's side off of the higher terrace. And I was wondering if there was any anything in the master plan to do development there. It might be a good alternative to the Glacier Creek or Glacier Valley. I can't remember what that development was, but the one that's a little more contentious in the trail system. Thank you.
Yeah, we have taken a look at those. Are you referring to kind of the the three triangles around that area?
Yep.
So two of those are quite impacted by avalanche risk. And then the larger one is is a pretty steep gradient. So we've we've looked at those sites in in quite a bit of detail. That larger area, which would allow for development, the slope there is pretty significant in the kind of I don't, I think it's a right away in between those two parcels that goes up to that parcel. It's extremely steep, so I'm not certain that we would be allowed to develop there, but we have looked at it.
Can I follow up? To the chair? Thank you. So would that be something that you would consider to be, could be given or traded or something sold to the municipality for recreation and open space?
I I can't give you an answer to that right now, but it's it's something we will discuss as as a follow up to this meeting with our internal team.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're winding down here. Do we have any more questions from board, board members? Oh, you see, you see, okay. And from, I don't see anything else online and in the room. I see Larry.
So one last question. Will these plans be available someplace online and maybe let folks know where we can look at and study?
Yeah, so we will be putting these online very shortly with also more detailed plans. I will include those parking numbers in there for you. And we will also show kind of the snow storage diagrams and those, and including a lot more of this information on our website. There's a development tab that literally just kind of has a, an article that was written, but we will be posting these online as soon as we can. And then also with the submission package, the very detailed plans, the schematic design plans for phase one, as well as the area master plan amendment, all of the very necessary details will be in that as well within the next month or so. But, yeah, we'll try and get everything up and running as quickly as we can.
And these are public documents now, since they've been a public meeting, so it'll be part of the minutes which will be posted this week. You'll be able to find them there.
So will that slideshow be available?
It will be, yes. It'll be in the, so if you go to the G B O S website, look at G B O S, scroll down, find joint meeting, you'll find it there.
Yeah, and just a note on that. I'm always open to any meetings to discuss this development and talk about development in Girdwood and have welcomed it with anyone. So if you want to meet and have a discussion about this, I would love to talk about this development with you. And I I've been fielding a lot of the emails that have been coming through the five eight seven email about this this meeting. And but if you have any general comments, it was on the the postcard that was sent out to residents, that is the the five eight seven resort email that you can also email feedback to. And again, more than happy to answer any questions or meet in person type development.
I believe we can make sure that that email is available on the meeting.
Put it in the minutes.
Right. So if you'd like to follow up on on anything from that, the meeting minutes should hopefully contain all the information you need for following up with directly or, yeah, any other question. All right. Any other hands up? We can't, thank you so much. That was a very detailed presentation. It sounds like we do have some questions. We'll be anxious to hear the answers for. So thank you for answering everything you could. And then we'll be hearing some of the answers from the questions that were slight stumpers. And I really appreciate, I know it's hard, a little bit stump a jump there. So we appreciate all the answers that you did give us and your detailed presentation, as I said. Thank you very much. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, sorry, wait, right, public comment. I forgot. Any comment, private or public comment, must state their full name and address. It's limited to three minutes per person. Sorry. I thought we all had our moment for public comment. Must be on something not listed on the agenda. Do we have anyone here for public comment? All right, in that case.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody online.